Okay, do we have anything for executive?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Anybody have anything?
Nope, guess not.
Alright, any need to amend the agenda?
Um, do you want, I can add that letter thing on if you want. For the village farm.
Yeah, okay.
Letter of support.
Alright, so we'll put that under new business. Alright, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So move.
Can you second?
Sorry, I was reading something. I forgot.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Yeah, no, it's, it's you and me guy. Even though you don't like sitting beside me.
Oh boy. Um, anything on the, uh, we had two minutes. We have the special meeting and the regular select board. Anything of note on there? Okay. Um, town manager's report.
Okay, um, we'll try to be quick here. So we have the, actually I can, I'll save the first one for when we have it in new business.
Okay.
Um, attended the TAC meeting on the 28th. We discussed starting a subcommittee to restart the regional priority list for projects on state highways in the county. Um, we used to do this for years with the priorities for like Bridge 108 was on it and stuff like that. And V-Trans stopped doing it and then there was this weird rating system they tried and then it went away. So, we, we kinda wanna do that again because then we could support whatever towns are, you know, in need first for the state highway projects. It used to hold some clout, so we're gonna see if we can fire that back up again. Um, and, um, then we talked about some grant funding stuff and there's a, there's a brochure that V-Trans put out called Show Me The Money, which breaks down all the grants, so we had a little topic on that. Um, the Fire Hill Road update, I just, I can be brief with this. Chief and Rich and I did a site visit at the 2783 Fire Hill Road property. There was no evidence of rats or trash there. Um, we did speak with the landowner about the abundance of vehicles and they are going to make a reasonable attempt to be in compliance with the town junk ordinance. Um, I actually have the health orders, the findings of fact from our thing here, so. Um, but I know that a vehicle or two has already left. Um, they haven't had power there for two years, so no water in, no water out. Um, and, um, so with that one. Um, so yeah, findings of fact have been sent to our attorney for review. I got them back.
That you were gonna ask?
Oh, I need to ask.
Oh.
So which one is 2783?
That's RD on top, the one on the top of there.
Way up top?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, we met, we had a great conversation with him actually, so I, I think he understood where we were coming from and, you know, so we'll see.
He's on top of it.
He's on top.
So the garbage got cleaned up?
There's no, there, we walked around the whole thing. There's, there's a lot of junk there, but there was no trash on that, on that one.
He cleaned the place before he moved.
Yeah, and the coy, the coyote was taken down.
Okay, so he must, because the day I drove by there, there were bags on top of a vehicle.
Yeah, there was nothing there.
That appeared to be garbage and there was some on the ground too.
So, well, if it was there, it's gone.
So he has cleaned it up. Okay, well, that's good.
He did say that he feeds his pigs feed, not scraps, so, um, you know, we talked about just making sure his feed was in a safe container. He said, "Yeah, I got squirrels that are, or chipmunks that are getting it too," so. Um, but we couldn't see rats or any, anything that-
They're all over at my house.
Is that where they are? Yikes.
They're annoying.
I bet.
So I did speak with Patrick Logues from DEC on the 25th. He's the enforcement guy for wastewater. Um, I told him that, I asked him if he was requesting us to get a warrant. He said, "No, he didn't request at any time that he needed one." And I told him that we were going up and that I would follow up with him. I called him this week. He's on vacation, but just to let him know what we ran into and- He said they're probably gonna send a letter to all three properties anyway because there was a complaint. Um, but, you know, we'll just, we'll keep in touch with him. Also spoke with Meg McCarthy at Department of Health and she confirmed that Rich is taking proper steps. And it's not necessary to contact the Department of Health for every case a local health officer starts. She was great. Her and Rich have talked a few times, so.
Okay.
Um, and just another quick note, I received an email from Chris Rikel at the Police Academy and he wanted to, um, let everyone know that they will be utilizing the shooting range on Sunday, April 7th from 0800 to 1200 hours. Um, so, well, and he says, "Well, weekend use is not unheard of. It's not often utilized on a Sunday. Just wanted to give a heads up."
Okay.
Um, and he also said this week, they've been, they've been doing some, we could hear him today. So if anyone calls you guys, that's why. Um, is there anything else that I wanted to, oh. So I, in your packet, there was this eclipse planning check-in, so I just wanted to make you guys aware that, the state's really worried about traffic and we actually have something later on this too. Um, so, just wanna make you aware of it that Arch Street shows up a couple times on their, their list, so.
Oh, really?
That's in our new business too. Um, and then just a couple of trainings. Um, there's a lot with the League Liability and Risk Management Guidance for Municipal Leaders. Um, and this one, which, if you guys could attend this one, I think it'd be great. It's open meeting law for boards and committees. It's April 17th. It's an hour and a half webinar. It's only 10 bucks and I would love to, if you guys, anyone's available to do it, I think it's gonna be worth doing that one.
Alright, yeah.
Um, let me know, well, you guys can sign up now. I think, I think Jeremy from the League sent out emails to everyone, logins and stuff, right? Didn't you say you got one?
Yeah.
Yep.
I did.
And-
I've had trouble though getting on in the past, so they've changed their whole registration system, so if you have any issues, you can-
Yeah, we'll get, we can get you. And I think that's all I have for my report tonight.
Can we just back up a minute to the, um, to the Fire Hill? So what about 981?
So 981-
Hi there.
I'm like, never.
Get lost?
Just run late on everything.
Chief Warfel has been dealing with them more than I have on that and he's, he was in touch with them. We're, we've given them till April 30th too to get the trash out and that's what we did with, with RD too on this, so. Um, Mike was gonna follow up with them today. We actually talked about that and we're, we've, we've got a little leverage we're gonna try to use to get it done, so.
Okay.
Um.
And that's in the, the findings of fact, is that-
Same thing, yep.
We as a board have agreed for to pursue all those?
So that one, we know that there was a septic system there, um, after doing some research, so we're just gonna see if it's still working.
Okay.
But other than that, that's, so. Yep.
Alright, I got a couple questions on this too. So the finding of fact was in here?
Nope. I just, it just came back. I have it here and I can pass it around to you guys.
Can we please get a copy?
Oh, sure. Um, well, this one can be signed by you guys too, so you could just pass that around, 'cause there's two of them.
So in looking through this stuff, um, there was supposed to be a report back from the lawyer. Is that correct?
So-
From-
Is that in this?
So you, you guys had asked me to send the finds of fact to our lawyer, which I did, and Gary read that and said it was good.
Okay, so that's what came back from the lawyer?
He just wanted, he was asking for process and we followed everything and said it was fine, so.
So this is our action that's gonna happen from the meeting, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I guess I'll read that before we ask the board.
Yeah, I was hoping to have it in your packet Friday, but he'd, I got sent it to him for review and he sent it back yesterday, so. They're both pretty much the same because of the same issues.
Right.
Alright, I'll read that before we ask.
I did cite like our junk ordinance and I think there's a state ordinance on there for, like, yeah.
Yeah, they are identical.
Yeah, they're, they're pretty much identical, it's just addresses and-
Right, there's a, oh, not-
Because those were the two that we just, we figured we could do was the trash and the, and have the sewer or septic inspected.
Yep. Okay.
And the, and the, you know, the car, that's the local junk ordinance and I know Jeff had sent him a letter on that. But like I said, he's already, RD's already started moving stuff out, so.
That's good.
The first one hasn't been much. I was by there yesterday.
Nope.
She was there when I rode by, taking, looking at something in the car, but-
Yeah, yeah, that one, that one, we're gonna have to probably be a little more stern on, but-
I think so.
You know, we've given them a date to April 30th, which is a month to get cleaned up and if they're not compliant, then we take the next step with Superior Court, so.
Yeah, the other two properties look like they'd made some attempts, some stuff.
Yeah, we haven't really said much to the middle one, but I know he, he was concerned when he was, when he was served the first time, so.
The middle one?
Yeah, there's the other four.
Backways off the road, coming down and-
Down in the-
Oh, down along, yeah. Yeah, 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 that, okay.
Yep. Alright. If you guys wanna sign them now, you can, or after when they sign everything, it doesn't matter.
I'll start it.
My name's on here twice.
You're very important.
Is it?
Yes.
Yep, it is.
And we forgot Tom. So do we wanna get re, new copies of these?
Nah, I can, I'll, I can, or just write Tom's name, just write Tom's name on the bottom of it.
Yes, we could do.
Yeah.
Huh? Did I do it on both of them?
Yep. Yeah.
Yep. Sorry, Tom. Uh, yeah.
Ah, nowhere.
That's weird.
You made a note here on the bids?
Yeah, it's on, it's on the agenda, so I'm gonna talk about that. So that one we started.
This is that first comment.
Thank you, Kelly.
Alright, uh, any select board member remarks? Any public comments?
Public?
I have lots of comments.
I have public on Zoom, so.
Oh. Anybody would like to make a comment? No? Okay.
Crickets.
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 Okay, um, so I think everyone knows that we had, um, put out an ad, ad, I guess, in the, um, was it just in the reporter?
Yep.
About, um, for some of our, um, well, I guess for all of our boards, right?
We did for the vacancies. There was planning, there was zoning, board of adjustment, and the mosquito district.
So we did get, and we got four responses actually for planning commission.
Gotten, received four so far for planning commission.
Um-
Other than the people that are already on it, or?
Yeah, well, we haven't heard, so that's the other thing, so we haven't heard back from them. I guess Ann had sent them an email.
They haven't responded?
So-
I, I'll follow up with Ann tomorrow again, but I haven't heard anything from them and neither has she, so.
So I think we should, um, send out
Maybe they didn't understand they didn't respond.
Maybe, one more email, um, and just kind of really, you know, maybe do some, maybe interview, like short interviews next, when, I mean, well, I don't know about the next meeting. Because I think, and that's gonna be coming up later, I think there's some discrepancies with that, our next meeting. Um, so. What does everyone think?
Well, I think, okay, so I think we've got all these other positions that are, I presume, has everything else, people gotten back that they wanna do it, you know, they, most of the rest of them?
Yes. Well, some of these are like, you know.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are kind of just-
Right.
Figureheads.
No, I understand.
Talk about the fence viewers?
Sorry, the fence.
Like ZBA, you know, Dan's here now, so that's, there's that vacancy which we put out.
And nobody's responded on that though? Nobody's expressed interest in filling that?
Nope. Um, Rowland County Solid Waste, both those folks said they'd do it again.
Okay.
Um, Regional Planning, that's, I think that's been discussed a few times, that Dave's off in here.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, that's in there, yep.
Emergency Management, Tim's fine, Jeff's fine with that, Animal Control. So, um, I don't really know if there's anything else. Fence viewers, you guys already did, right?
Mm-hmm, 'cause we, it was everybody here.
So really, no.
Joe was still here when we were discussing about it.
That's it, and they're both, they're both still wanting to stay on, so.
Should we act on the rest and leave the planning commission?
I think that's exactly what we should do.
I would make a motion that we approve everything except the planning commission, uh, because we have not heard from those one, two, three, six people, I guess.
Yep.
And send out another notification to them, asking them if they still wanna be on or not, and letting them know that we have people to take their place if they don't want to, if that's what they're worried about.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, give them till the next meeting to respond and if they don't, then I'd like to bring in whoever we're thinking of putting on and interview them.
Okay.
So we know what we're getting, but we need to get at-
I'm guessing they didn't understand.
Probably, but we need to, um-
Which is weird that it was all, everybody else responded except for them.
Right.
I don't know why that happens.
Well, I don't know, but anyway, um, because planning commission's got a lot of work they gotta do, so.
I know.
They need to get on it.
Is that a motion?
That's a-
That is a motion, yes. It's a long motion.
That was a long motion. Did you get that, Kelly?
She got to just-
I got it.
I mean, if you guys know anyone that wants to do mosquito district or we need another ZBA person.
Right, we do need, yeah, so that means we can't just, um-
Well, but no one's applied for any of those yet, so I think Dave's thing would be fine.
So Dave, you said to approve all as proposed, except for planning commission, to send out another notification to those folks and interview the new prospects.
I think we should interview everyone just to, 'cause we have a lot of stuff going on to see if everybody's still interested and that even are on now are interested in the town plan. That's a lot of work. The Enhanced Energy Plan.
Let's make sure they understand. I would have thought we heard back. I don't think they understood.
Okay, no, that's fine. But then, so, um, in that motion though, would we also, we would take Dan out of, that's, oh, that's just a vacancy. We already have. The fact that his name is in there is throwing me off. I'm just gonna cross that. Okay, alright. Do we have a second?
We did.
Tom?
Sorry. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, Local Emergency Management Plan.
Did you wanna do these other few that were inherently, which is the, for the old business?
Oh, yep, I'm sorry. I, yes, I do.
Oh.
Um, okay, so Recording Clerk, um, Official Newspaper, which is a Brandon reporter.
The schedule is-
Oh, adoption of them, we didn't do that last?
No, no, we don't have, the schedule is in the packet.
Okay. Um, alright, yeah.
Any questions on those, you guys?
I make a motion that we appoint the Assistant to the Town Manager as the Recording Clerk. We appoint the Brandon Reporter as our Official Newspaper and we adopt the Select Board Meeting Schedule as presented.
Great.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, so yeah, the Emergency Management Plan, is there any, I know we have to sign it every year. Is there any, been any alterations or changes to it?
Just a couple things with, probably not much that concerns you guys, but we had some changes with, um, the, some of the contacts with like Rowland Regional and, um, the, the Bayada. I don't know if I said that right.
Bayada?
The Assistant, yeah. So some of those things, and those were directly from Regional Planning. Um, I did send this to Tim, so he's looked at it already.
Alright.
I think we just had a couple, there were some phone numbers that were, that I had to change too, but other than that, it's, yeah, it's the same as last year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Aye.
It'll need Alicia's signature after the meeting.
Um, and then the National Incident Management Systems Adoption and Signature.
Same thing. We do this every year, so.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, potential road, road closure of Arch Street on April 8th.
So, we, I've been following the, the stuff with V-Trans and the League on the whole eclipse planning.
Yep.
And they throw these traffic scenarios out on where the potential problems would be based on GPS.
Yep.
And Arch Street has come up on every scenario. So Chief and I talked about it and figured it wouldn't hurt to close it for the day and keep traffic on Route 7. We'll have an officer down at Beldens, 'cause they're gonna work.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, obviously the residents will figure out how to get in.
Yeah, yep.
But to keep cars from, 'cause they're anticipating like 160 to 200,000 people coming through here.
Yeah, I know. I've heard even bigger numbers.
So, and, and like, I, I-
I doubt it myself.
I really doubt it.
Hotels in Rowland are booked out. It's crazy.
Like in a couple years.
They'd have a flight into Burlington.
But then on the news this morning, their bookings for motels are only up 30% from what they normally are, so you got a lot of, you know.
So, I think, I think we're looking at trying to be just a little proactive just in case, 'cause we know how people feel about through traffic on Arch Street. Um, also, I was reading an article in the Herald where Brandon is closing Carver Street. So I talked to them and said, "Well, we don't need cars going up and getting hung up on the bridge or Syndicate Road, especially if we have crap weather, so we're just gonna shut that down for the day too on our end, so people aren't getting caught up in there and trying to turn around."
I mean, that seems fine.
Well, it's underwater anyway, so.
Once they cross the bridge, there's nowhere to turn around.
No.
No, yeah.
The GPS does send you up Arch Street.
Yeah.
All of them though.
Yeah.
So, um-
So how will you do that so locals can use it? They'll know to come in mechanics?
Pleasant.
Okay, as lo, okay, so the only, I'm not disagreeing with any of this. We just need to figure out a way so the townspeople know this, because it's very clear we have a communication. We do stuff here and people don't find out about it, so I don't know what we've got to let people know.
Well, we can try, we can put it on our Facebook post. I have that sent text, but we've only had 64 residents sign up for it, which is kind of a bummer. So we're hoping we get more of that. Um, but we can get it out however, well, Stephen's on. He could probably put something in the paper too.
Message board on Saturday.
Actually, it'll be too late, won't it?
That's what we should do. Where's our, where's our message board? Is it our sandwich board, whoever's?
It's downstairs.
Is it downstairs? We should put that somewhere prominent.
Okay.
Put it right down to Arch Street.
Right at the end, right on, do we have more than one?
Closed on the 8th.
I don't think so.
It's crazy. We only have one, but yeah.
Let me talk-
Maybe you could borrow one.
I bet the library wouldn't, actually the library's at the top of Arch and I bet they would be happy. I shouldn't speak for that, but-
Let me talk to Justin Beldon. Maybe they can put it on their, their message board still.
That would be better.
Yeah.
That would be, yeah.
That actually would be great.
I'll do the, you know, I can do the 511 where you'd send it and the state will send out a thing if you're on 511 too, so I'll do that as well.
Yeah, but it really needs to be on the road, 'cause that's where they got to.
Let me ask Justin tomorrow if he can do it.
I know, 'cause it's really too late to send everyone their letters.
They closed that.
Does 511 come up on GPS? Do you put it on there?
That's, yeah, that's true.
Might be worth, might be worth doing.
Yeah, I said I'd do it on 511.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, to send down the letter to the residents, see what they thought.
Yep.
Alright, I'll, I wrote myself a note to put it on the Facebook page.
Comical part is the south end of the path of totality is up in Middlebury.
I know.
We're probably not even gonna get anything here.
Well, we're, we're supposed to get like 98, 97% or something like that.
97% here, yeah. But it's the people going north and coming back that's the problem.
Which we do have a lot, just since we're talking about it, there is, um, a lot of things planned, um-
In Brandon.
No, here in town too.
Oh, really?
Yep, we're having us, yeah, the library's putting it on, but it's gonna be at the Village Farm, but, um, Shelley, Shelley got all this really cool stuff from Echo's, um, Science Museum. And it was free. It was through a grant, it was a grant funded program and she has like 500 glasses and like all these cool things for kids to learn about, you know, like a lot of hands-on models and things. So we have a whole, like, activity thing planned.
Jacob was just talking about that today, 'cause they got a half a day on.
Yep, yep.
Early release.
Yeah.
Well, we may, we may not even have school Monday. Now they're talking about closing it completely. I'll be in New York City, so I won't be seeing a damn thing.
No, the billings are gonna block it out.
It's, it's hard to predict and, you know, trying to be prepared for, like, we don't know, like, if the cars are gonna be coming up 89 or 22.
Right, I know.
You know, this, I, I think this is an easy way to just deal with it and keep them on 7 and then we don't have to worry about it.
No, I mean, it's better to be prepared and-
Especially if it's already been advertised that Arch Street's gonna be closed.
I was shocked that I saw it on all the scenarios, like, huh.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
By the same token, do we have stepped up police patrols that day?
So PD's gonna be down there on building duty anyway, so they'll be on the south end and I've talked to Chief Hempel about having a fire truck on the north end, so we'll have it.
Just for traffic control, but for in general, 'cause there's been a lot of talk of-
We've got a bunch of guys on.
craziness going on for the eclipse.
Yep, we've got, I know, I know Stefan and Dave are both on that day, so. Yeah, it's kind of, it's like the 4th of July parade, you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
They always like the cars to get up here from the city and stuff and then they can't get charged up and they're outside the road.
Well, they'll die by Bennington. They don't make it here.
We don't need them. We need a motion.
Chief said that now, that the way it's been done has usually been the town manager and the chief.
No, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
Definitely wanted to let you guys know, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Alright, any questions on the orders, including, I don't know if everyone saw, we did have an added one of 14,374 dollars and 28 cents.
I do.
Okay.
Josh Dental, April, 36 bucks.
So-
Rebate or we pay for another month or what is that?
So I'd have to look on that, but I'm assuming we paid a month ahead on it and that's how it works with most insurance.
Oh, okay.
That's what we went through when Brandon passed up.
I have one other one. So I see Brookside Services picked up trash on Syndicate Road?
Chad brought, that, we had someone that dropped a camper off down there. It was Dave's. So Chad went and got it and they, they took it for us.
That was hunting camp, you know?
That was some rough hunting. It was like-
So that's what, that's what that is, the camper? Okay, I just had to ask what it was.
Yep, so Chad brought it down to him and they-
So much for camp.
Yep.
He didn't have a permit for it. We got rid of it.
There you go. Jesus Christ. Unbelievable. They dump everything over there. That was all I had.
Yeah, don't have anything. Alright, I guess you can send that down and sign.
Alright.
Do you wanna sign them before you go into the other stuff?
Might as well, it's on right there. Get it over with.
Here's a bunch of payrolls that need to be signed. Somehow gotten skipped. God. Um, Ann did have the one for Rowland County Solid Waste in here, so that one can be signed.
Okay.
Um, Alicia on those. Okay. There's those. Ann did that one.
Ann did them both. That was, that's the day I got really sick.
Oh, right, that's right.
That got me a trip to the hospital.
Yeah, that sucks.
I'm getting like Joe. You're starting to stack them up.
I know, let's go.
Those are signed. You saw the, the stuff from PD, right, the reports?
Yeah.
We have been writing a lot of tickets.
So, again, are we gonna get it in a format where we see what we actually get, not just what was written?
Um, sure, we can look, if you look at revenues in the budget too on the Police Department, I think I gave, we gave you, um, budget last, at the last meeting, it'll show what we're taking in as revenue too.
You gave it at the meeting or was it in the packet?
It was in the packet.
Oh, alright. I know, 'cause, you know, people have asked and I don't, okay.
Yeah, I don't know right off the top of my head, but I, it's, it's in the revenue line on the budget.
Yeah, 'cause we're quite a bit above last year already.
Could be.
Has it been collected?
Well, yeah, but last year's is uncolle, I mean, so it's-
It's whatever we get sent to us.
Whatever percentage of it we get, 'cause part of it goes to the state and-
I'll, I'll make a note to send you that number.
It'd be interesting year to year so we could get a percentage that we, you know, if we're getting 20% or we're getting 50% or we're getting 80%, It'd be interesting year to year, so we could get a percentage that we, you know, if we're getting twenty percent, or we're getting fifty percent, or we're getting eighty percent, so we know how much of that number we actually are getting, so we know what the bottom line is.
Those are just mine.
But if you look at, if you look at your.
These are all yours?
All that, yeah, that's just to add to the pile. I just needed one signature.
If you look at your budget, that we had in the packet last week, it will show police ticket revenue on it, so it'd be year-to-date.
Okay.
Fiscal year-to-date.
Oh. Guess we should have, we should have had that town meeting then, once a member, somebody asked.
It was probably in the Town of the Farm.
Hmm.
Should've been.
Okay.
Well, maybe throw, throw it in next meeting, then we can compare to them.
Yeah.
Then we'll know roughly what percentage of it we're getting. It'd be nice to just have a rough idea.
Yeah.
Actually, if you don't mind, the next somebody, next time somebody complains on the, uh, Facebook page, my lady can go, well, we've written.
Oh, it's public record now, it's here, Joe. Take that window.
Absolutely. So I did notice that our, our fuel bill was right up there, because that car runs all day parked at the top of the hill. Are we covering our expenses with this car?
Oh, we're definitely covering our expenses.
Well, that's it, well, you're running a car every hour. So there's wear and tear besides the gas on it, and we've got, what, twenty-five dollars leeway from what we're charging?
Per hour.
So, how much does it cost an hour for the use of the car? I guess that's my question.
Yeah.
Because twenty-five isn't much for a piece of equipment to run all the time, when it comes down to actual wear and tear on the car.
Hmm.
Yeah, I can look into it.
Yeah, because I think we'll definitely wanna pay attention to that one, because it's all day, it's, it's there running.
Alright, recess from open me, or select board meeting and open as a liquor board.
Oh, wait.
You have pits for village farm.
We added the village farm thing on there.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, where?
So, this came to me today too, and I wanted to run it by the board first. So Donna dropped off, Donna Wilson dropped off this note asking if I would write a letter of support for a grant that they just found out about. It's a federal grant, um, a CDS grant for farm restoration. She says, our plan is to have a child center for for twenty-six kids, for birth to three-years-old, two two-bedroom handicap accessible apartments, a community room to seat forty-five, and a cafe. Would you be willing to write a letter of support? And it's due Monday.
How is that a farm restoration? Is that what the grant's for?
No, she's calling it the farm restoration.
Oh, oh, okay, I thought that was the title of the grant, I was gonna say, no.
So, I don't wanna do anything for the village farm unless the select board wants me to, because I know that there's been some contention. Um, so. I'm asking the board if they want me to write a letter or not.
I guess my only concern is that we're just hearing about it, and we don't know any information about it. We had, knew about the other ones in advance to be able to re, like, re, you know, look into it ourselves.
I have nothing here, other than their narrative, which doesn't even say what, you know, like, break the grant down and everything.
The title of the grant, again, is?
CVS, I just looked it up, what was it?
CVS Farm Restoration.
Oh, Congressional, Congressional, um, oh gosh, dispersment, right?
It's on my desktop, if I can look at it.
Congressional dispers, what's the, what was the acronym again?
CDS.
CDS.
I know it was Congressional. I think it was dispersment. I don't remember what the S was.
One of those things. CD, no, it's a CPF. CDS funding, what is CDS?
Look up.
Well.
Conventionally directed spending.
Oh, directed.
There it is.
That's conventionally directed spending, yes.
We just looked it up quickly and.
Yeah, I know.
Didn't really have.
I mean, so what do they wanna do with, like, is it, yeah, I know, we did.
That's all it is.
Instead it was the pork.
This is big-time pork, that's all it is. At the request of a member of Congress.
Actually, I think that probably is related to funding that I think Peter Welch just got.
Yeah, that is, yeah.
Yeah.
One of the agencies, I just got the email today, and I was going through, and one of the, uh, agencies got X amount of dollars for farm restorations and whatnot, but, uh, turning a farm into a two-bedroom and a
Well, it was a farm restoration.
Nursery, we'll call it, does that fall under the correct category, especially if it's a town farm and not a private farm?
Good point, Joe. So is this a farm restoration part of this?
I, I don't know.
That's what it's supposed to be.
I don't have a lot here.
That's kinda what I, I heard when you first said it, but.
Like, a, like an actual working farm?
No, she, I am writing a grant for the farm restoration. I think she's calling the farm, that's just the short.
So it's not the farm restoration, it's their restoration?
But I believe the funding is for, or a farm.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so yeah, what are the parameters for, even for the grant?
That was, yeah.
I wish I could tell you.
So, no information attached to that?
Not about the grant.
Let me see if I can find the email that had the info and it on that.
And no one's here.
If I haven't already gotten rid of it.
Too bad she didn't come.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's too bad, I'd like to, I just have some questions that, you know, would like answered. It's too bad that it's due on Monday. I would've liked some time to look into that.
A little time would've been nice. I, I guess I'm gonna say we probably should have had a little more information on this, or I would feel better knowing exactly what this is and not have it just shoved in front of us right before.
No, I know.
If they wanna bring it back, then it's fine, and tell us about it, that'd be great.
And actually, really, if it is the funding that just got passed, I would think you would have a little more time than Monday to submit your application. I mean, we just got the money.
Right.
Yeah.
The email just went out that the money is there. You mean to tell me, okay, here it is, you got till Monday? That's not even a week.
Well, maybe, I think, um, I'm sensing some discomfort without knowing details, so maybe reach out to Donna and see, maybe just verify that that is due, if, you know, and just see if there's more information, if she can bring it to the next meeting.
Well, next meeting would be too late, according to that.
Well, that's.
She should ask for, she should ask for.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna sign off on something just because it's like time-sensitive, if we don't have the D information or information.
Well, you have, like Joe said, it came out yesterday, and it's gotta, it comes out within a week, you gotta.
Less than a week.
Well, that's, maybe she's mistaken on the due date and.
Maybe it's a year from now. Or maybe it's a different program that she's talking about, but I just happened to see that, and when you guys were talking about it.
I think with any of these things brought to us, that we should have at least time between the next meeting to digest what we're looking at.
No, I agree.
I, I just think that's fair for everybody, because Dan's not here, you know, I, I like to read stuff for a while.
I know.
Not just the farm, but anything that's brought from us, really, we need a couple weeks to digest, we can't just do it on the spot.
Yeah, so maybe just, maybe just check out, check in with her and see. See if we can get, if there's more time and if we can get more details.
What I got here in the email is seven hundred and forty thousand for the Vermont Housing Conservation Board to assist at least one hundred Vermont farms and forests increase viability, access land, recover from the pandemic, and improve climate resiliency.
I think that's something, I think there's two things here.
It's gotta be two different things.
There has to be, because that one.
I don't know, because that's not a farm. You can call it a farm all day, but it's not a farm. Yeah, that's just it. Or the other one was, do, 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 two hundred and sixty thousand for, no, that wasn't that, that's something else. There was another one in here under forestry, but I don't think they would.
Yeah, that wouldn't apply here either.
Either.
So Welch's emails, I just believe it.
I don't get them.
Should read them on.
I'm not sure how I got it, but hey, at least I know pork.
Thank you.
Alright, yeah, so let's just try to get some more information, okay?
So how do you want me to phrase this ending? Are we just?
Um, that we're just waiting.
Consensus that more discussion is.
The consensus is that we need more information.
More information, um, yeah.
Due to lack of information and time to review, we've asked for more information.
Because we don't even know whether we've got.
Because it's not tabled.
No.
Okay. No, it's not tabled, we just.
We get back on it, so.
We'll reach out to them and see if they wanna give us more information.
Consensus not to write the letter.
We decline at this point.
Yeah.
We decline at this point, because we don't have enough information.
I guess, I guess that's more upfront, right?
I think we should just be, what it is.
Okay, alright, now we can open up as liquor board, and we have a bunch.
A slew of them.
A slew.
A lot of drinkers in town.
Well, it's a lot, it's only like three, it's four different places, right?
You got a couple tobacco ones.
That's, but yeah, so there's, they're four different things. So, but they're all, the only new business, though, um, that we, but, is the, um.
And the three that Helen had.
Hitched, but that's the new, that's the hitched, but those are the ones that do weddings and things like that, obviously hitched, I got that.
Sounds like, huh, hitched.
And so that's exclusive, like, out, for outdoor events, right?
Yep.
So, um, other than that, it's all.
All three, yeah.
Places and people we're familiar with, signing off on.
I have no issue with any of these.
No, nor do I.
So if we, uh, just trying to see who all of these are, it's, uh, um.
Roland Rooster. Roland Rooster and Champlain Farms.
Champlain Farms and.
So if we had, was it Champlain Farms, the one not too long ago, we had underage people buying?
Well, it was a few years, it was some years ago.
There haven't been any more instances of that.
Not that we've been made aware of.
Okay, alright, then I have no problem.
Alright, well, do we have a motion to approve the liquor license?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we'll come out of liquor board and open as Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay.
Review these high sewer bid results.
So we had five, five bids, bidders at the bid opening, um, and the apparent low bidder, and I do have the bid analysis that was sent to me, again, just, what did I just do with it? Um, from Otter Creek Engineering, that Markowski's bid was, was fine for the little bit. Everything checked out. Um, so.
What was the timeframe between it being looked, you know, before we went, put it up to bid? And got the estimate from the engineer?
It was a month or three weeks. I think it was a month.
Wondering along, wondering along.
Oh, I just, I'm just wondering where the, why it's so much, because it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so I guess. Put it out longer than a month.
So, I guess my question is, maybe, hopefully somebody can answer it. Last time we did this, we had engineers do a culvert over in Florence, and that was hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars more to put in than what the engineering firm said. Now again, we're a hundred and fi, why are we hiring these engineering firms to do the estimates when they aren't even close?
That's my point, yeah, how did it get a hundred and fifty thousand more in three weeks?
How did it get that far off?
The engineer's estimate wasn't the same as the bids. I mean, I, there's, I, I couldn't tell you that, I'm not an engineer, but this was the firm that's been doing your guys wastewater stuff and water stuff for, well before I came here, so.
Well, I think we're gonna have to get some more accurate information next time we do something, for sure. And then the next question is, where will we find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So, so, we can find it. We have, we have about eighty-three thousand dollars in the, um, capital for sewer right now, in our reserve, the capital fund.
That's halfway.
Yep. This project wouldn't start till after July one. We could look at encumbering what's left over in our general fund to cover the sixty thousand dollars or whatever that's after that, because we'll have money left from transfer station, a salary that we don't have anymore in, in highway, um, we can find the money.
That's kinda what I was.
I, you know, and I, I'm.
In position.
Yeah, Helen and I have talked about it, Anne and I have talked about it. Um, you know, if we can, if we, I know you guys, it sounds like you haven't done any encumbrances at year-end in quite some time, but, um, as long as it's, like, the town, like, we could come to you with a request for encumbrance to do a project within the next fiscal year, um, but it has to be for that specific project, so. I think we'll have, looking at it right now, we will have money to cover that cost. And if we use, so, we also look too, like, water has definitely more capital money than wastewater, there's, that, the money's there right now too, so, you know, if we wanted to borrow from water or whatever, we could, to get the project done.
The project definitely needs to be done, it's been put off for forty years, I mean.
And I, we're so close, I, I'm, I know that we can come up with a, a good solution to find.
You wait another year, it's gonna want more.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
I know, it's just disappointing, but it's.
So we'll be able to take, uh, the eighty thousand plus from already in the capital fund for the sewer.
Yeah.
And the other, we can pull out of the general fund, given the open position, maybe some other things.
So, another thing too is, Anne and I were talking today, and it looks like we might have actually a profit in sewer this year that we could use too, which would be nice to see something.
Interesting.
You know, well, just with redoing.
Holy moly.
Rates and stuff and.
Never had, never had a profit.
Paying some things up, it's, you know, so, um.
So we have your assurances, we can cover that most likely?
I think once June thirtieth comes, and we do encumbrances in June for the year, fiscal year-end, we'll, we'll have money to do it. Yeah, I talked to Markowski's today, I mean, we haven't signed a contract or anything, obviously, because we're waiting, you know, for this, but they're not planning on starting till end of July or August anyway, so that would work out well.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to make a motion on that one, because I've fought that for the last thirty years, the time I lived over there.
Yeah.
How many times has your brother-in-law?
Oh my god, my brother-in-law, my house got flooded, the sewer, had to put in backup traps and everything, because the town sort of backing up into the houses all the time.
Yeah.
It's not pitch.
Oh yeah, it was not pretty.
I'll, I'll second that.
So my motion is to award, my motion is to award Markowski, uh, the bid for the sewer project.
Do you have it on mail?
For eight hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
Exactly.
Any further discussion on that?
So, I, I just wanna say, I think Mark and Dave bring up a really good point that, and this is happening everywhere, that we're seeing estimated costs, and then it's, it's not even close, and, I mean, you know, if it was a ten million dollar job, and we're off by a hundred thousand dollars, okay. But when it's this, like, it's, it's hard for, well, it's hard for us to plan for something like that, when we know, we knew that we had.
Percented.
Right, and we knew that we had this amount of money.
It's a lot.
So, I'm gonna talk to Otter Creek anyway, I wanted to, you know, see where we landed today, but, um, they need to know.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I mean, the bids, you know, went from eight hundred to one point three million.
I know.
Well, yeah, it, it isn't like, yeah, one was in, within fifty thousand dollars, and there was other higher ones. One is times two, yeah.
The next closest.
Yeah, but nine hundred thousand was kinda the average, and you would think that if there was an estimate, that the estimate would have been around nine, nine twenty-five. So, um.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be brought up, because.
Oh, I agree.
It's happened a couple times, and I don't think, I don't think we should be.
This isn't the first time this has happened.
We shouldn't be paying for professional services that don't give us somewhat accurate.
It's hard to plan, and that's what's bugging me, like, you know, we knew what we had, they knew what we had. If we couldn't have done it, then we should have had a conversation months ago with the engineers, saying, you know, you guys are coming up short right now, you gotta find some more funding.
Right.
Well, okay, so that brings up another point. Everybody knows what we have. This has bugged me since forever about, and maybe it's the only way we can do it and whatever, but if, if people, like you say, Otter Creek knew we had seven hundred and fifty thousand, whatever the total was.
Six, six something.
What, six, whatever it was to do this. Okay, so their bid comes in somewhere near what we've got, okay? Would it have, and this is just my question, had they not known that number, would it have come in there? And is there a way for us not, it seems like we approve five hundred thousand dollars to build this thing, then we go out to bid, and you know nobody's bidding less than five hundred, because they already know we got that to spend. So is, this is, is there a way we can do this, so people don't know what we're got to spend ahead of time?
Put any project up, but let them put a price on it.
This was a unique one, because we had.
Yeah, because.
Arpa money.
Arpa money, this one was, right.
Everybody knew.
The same as the.
Everybody knew what we, everyone knew.
Well, the salt shed, that's classic example.
Yeah, salt shed.
I agree with Dave on this. We have to start thinking about the taxpayers' money in this whole arena, and then maybe we don't talk about prices until we get right down to it. That way, we're not showing our hand before we go out to bid.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a tough one when it's discussed in a public meeting, though. That's, that's the hard thing, because, you know, anyone can.
But do you do it in, because, I mean, in executive session, we can talk about stuff that the information would taint whatever, so.
So, well, no, that's, that's a question we need to have answered, I think.
Maybe this is even one for Gary, but we need to look at that, because we're trying to protect the taxpayers' money, and I, I think David's a hundred percent correct. Everybody knew what we had. I'm not surprised if that was the lowest one, because they all said, oop, that's no problem. And this is, you know, easy digging, straight shot. This is not our deal. There's no traffic. It's all sand. It's as easy as it gets. We thought we were gonna be a little more competitive, even.
Well, we had, we had ten people show up for pre-bid, and, yeah.
Anyway, it's just, I agree with this.
I, I wasn't surprised, but I was hoping for about a hundred thousand less.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they knew we had it, so.
Well, that's, I know.
Alright.
Next time, maybe we get something.
I would be interested in asking Gary that question, you know? Um, cause I wonder if, like, in an open meeting, we can discuss a project without throwing out numbers, and specific numbers could be held over.
Yeah, the hard thing is, is when, when you do bid docs and everything, like, you've got engineers' estimates in there, cause you have all the quantities and stuff, so. I don't know. I, I'll ask the question.
Alright, and just. You gotta look at this. There must be a way we could do this, to at least protect a little bit.
No.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, the cost of materials has gone crazy. I mean, culverts are stupid.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm just saying.
Pipe, I mean, that's one thing, like, this is not, we don't have to follow by America for the pipe, which actually saves us a ton of money. We don't have to follow Davis Bacon, which the contractors, you know, Davis Bacon wages are a pain to report, so. I don't know. I thought we'd see a better price too, but we gotta get it done.
Alright, any, uh, further discussion on that topic? All in favor, say aye.
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 Fortunately.
I know.
Fortunately, but unfortunately.
Well, yeah, fortunately, but unfortunately.
Alright, we'll come out of Water and Sewer Commission, open back up as Select Board, and.
Oh, I have a question. I sent you guys out an email earlier this week about the meeting on the seventeenth, so.
I didn't drop me the way.
Oh, that's right.
Ann, Anna's gonna be at a family vacation.
With both of them, even if we switch it, you have a problem?
That week, and I, my wife is trying to, we, my daughter's.
Which one is?
We got two more colleges that we need to go look at, and she wanted, it's April break for school. How do you guys feel about me not being here, but zooming in for the meeting? Is that alright?
I don't think I'm gonna be here. That is school break, so I'm gonna probably.
You'll be gone too, probably.
Be gone.
I, I, I don't mind working on Mo at all.
I told you I didn't mind moving it to the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I'm gonna bring my laptop with me anyway, so if, you know, I'm, I don't mind working and checking emails and.
I'd rather move it only cause, you know.
You wanna move it to the twenty?
Then you won't be able to be there on the twenty-fourth.
Well, I don't know, I haven't decided what we're doing over April break, so I don't know whether I will or not, because, you know, the state of Vermont is so massive, we couldn't have. All the schools have vacation at the same time.
For hell no.
That is ridiculous.
I think this is the first time I've ever experienced that.
It would have been forever.
Well, it's been forever, right?
They would have to.
Been that way for twenty-five years or more.
But by gosh, they can do our budgets for the school.
Oh, they, yeah, they could.
They got it all under control.
So, I, I don't mind zooming into a meeting either, cause like I said, I'm gonna work, I'm gonna take my stuff with me, cause.
Let's just do the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
I, I.
Yeah.
Alright.
It would be good, though, if we have some other meetings to move, if I know a little more ahead of time. That one's an easy one. Usually I have to plan, I plan a month's ahead.
I, I didn't realize this until I received a text from my wife with an Airbnb reservation, I'm like, oh no.
Alright.
It's alright.
Alright.
But I, I, and I'm, I, I think we're gonna be back the Thursday, so I don't mind, like, I, like I said, I'm gonna take my stuff with me, and I'm, it's, I'll, I'll do what needs to be done.
So Dan's email, asking about if there'd be someone available in the office to cover the ba- both you and Ann are gonna be out the whole week?
Yeah, um, I might be back Thursday.
Alright, long as.
But I'm, I'll be available by phone and email, so.
Long as, long as you've got something covered in case they need to.
I don't like not responding to emails for a week, you know, so.
I just wanna make sure if both of you are gone, that someone could be here to.
Yeah.
I thought that was a legitimate question.
Yeah, it was, yeah. I mean, we're pretty quiet right now, really. So, it's not a bad time.
How long's it gonna be reached by phone? I don't think it's an issue.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, will you remind me? I'll put that on Facebook too. I'm gonna write myself a note, but just, if you don't, just please remind me.
Okay.
Might just be nice, you know, that way people aren't coming in that week, and then being annoyed or upset because you or Ann are not here, so I'll put that on.
Yeah, you know, just another, I know, we're kinda, I'm, I'm here, but Alicia and I were talking about. Folks, like, I'm not getting a lot of calls when things happen, like dogs loose or whatever, and they're going on social media. And. I know we've had a couple of folks say they can't get ahold of Rich, and one did at the last meeting, and, I mean, the, the phone number that's on the, on the website is the same as the one on my phone, and it works. And, you know, Rich has been really good with responding to calls when I call him and everything, so. Um. Maybe we should start using our town Facebook page for stuff like, you know. See, see a dog running at large, call Rich immediately. Um, you know, putting out, like, dog licenses were due April first. I did use send text rec, sent it out, we only went sixty-four people. But putting a lot of our notices on there, I think, would be good for, you know, sort of our.
Yep.
Yeah. Our yearly things that have to happen.
Hmm, excuse me.
If you guys are okay with that.
Facebook, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
I think we should also, um, see what it would take to have some more admins on that page.
Okay, I think you're just, I think you have to add them on, that's it.
Okay.
We, come in.
I never even set it up.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, just come in and.
Lewis did, didn't she? Lewis Lewis did, or.
No, it was that guy, the guy we used to use for.
Oh, Jackson Wheel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's pretty easy to switch, so.
So.
Come in, and we'll just do it.
Yeah, I mean, cause I'm good with sharing stuff for my own, when I see anything Pittsburgh related, I'll share it, but I, my skills are subpar. With like creating po- I mean, I can do some real basic stuff, I'm just saying, it wouldn't.
Better than mine.
It wouldn't hurt to have Ann or somebody still, also be able to post things, is what I'm saying.
People are reading social media like that than any of the newspapers, and anything that we do here anymore. You know, no one's going to our website.
Yep.
Really, y- you know, so. Alright. Yeah, we'll work on that. I think we should use it just for an informational thing.
Yeah, alright. Um.
Alicia, this is Beth Saradarian, um, and I have a, I don't know where I'm supposed to. Talk about it, but I have something I just wanted to ask about.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I'm having an issue with, um, I dropped off my water bill in January in the overnight bin, and apparently it was lost, and so I'm being. Um, getting penalty and interest bills, and I sent an email to four members of the staff, and never heard anything back, and then, uh, sent another one, copied some of you on it. And Ann reached out, but I don't know what the next steps are, and I'm unbelievably frustrated that I'm being charged twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents for the town losing my check.
Okay. Um, do you know anything about that?
So. Beth had emailed a bunch of us, I brought it to the town clerk's office, and, um, Beth, I apologize that I didn't get back to you, I thought that. The town clerk or treasurer would. Um. I know they watched video from Dropbox, they looked for the check, they couldn't find anything. Um, but, I mean, I can't waive penalty and interest, and neither can Helen, so, you know, it's, um.
Has to go to the BCA.
Isn't there like a board of abatement meeting or something, and how can we get that scheduled?
That would go under the Water and Sewer for abatement.
Yeah, we would have to do it as Water and Sewer Commission. So what's the process?
BCA has to do it, I think.
BCA is land.
No.
Water and Sewer has always done a bait.
Water and Sewer, debate that.
But I don't know what the process.
Well, we do Water and Sewer.
Yeah, I thought Board of Civil Authority did all of the above.
Yes.
No.
Nope. Water and Sewer has done them.
I don't know.
Water and Sewer does their own.
Yeah, we did.
Can we find out and get back to Beth about what process she would need to take, and find out specifically if it should be Water and Sewer Commission, or, or the BCA?
Mm-hmm.
We heard a lot of them on BCA.